Good afternoon, everyone. I'd like to call to order the Planning Commission meeting for August the 6th. Ms. Brown, please call roll.
Commissioner Bowditch?
Here.
Commissioner Michelle?
Here.
Commissioner Williams?
Here.
Commissioner Taylor?
Here.
Commissioner Shook?
Here.
Commissioner Stachow?
Here.
Commissioner Diaz?
Here.
Commissioner Black?
Here.
Chairperson Taylor, we have a quorum.
Thank you so very much. We'll now have the creed by Commissioner Stachow.
Thank you. The Newport News Planning Commission is mandated by state law and its members are appointed by city council. Section 15.2-2210 of the Code of Virginia states in part that every locality shall create a planning commission in order to promote the orderly development of the locality and its environment. The statutory purpose is to improve the public health, safety, convenience, and welfare of the citizens and to plan the future development of the communities. In serving this statutory purpose, the commission invites the comments at the public hearing of its interested citizens of matters before it and welcomes your presence. Chairperson Taylor, I move we adopt the agenda before us.
I second the motion.
Okay, so we move in properly, second that we accept the agenda before us. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, so we accept the agenda before us. Thank you so very much, Commissioner Stachow. Next, we have the invocation by Commissioner Michelle.
Let's pray. Father, our hearts do out to Fort Stewart today in Georgia, everyone affected by that tragedy there today. So we just, we pray for safety, we pray for first responders, we pray for peace and calm, and our thoughts and prayers are for those families. And so we just ask today, we thank you for this opportunity that we have to serve our great city, and we pray that the decisions that we make today would be in the best interest of our city and our citizens. So we ask for clarity and wisdom and guidance in your name, amen.
Amen.
We now have a predilegence by Commissioner Jones.
Predilegence to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I apologize, Commissioner Fuller. And it goes. I trust all commissioners have had a chance to read over the minutes from the July 16th meeting. Is there any question, comments, or corrections to the minute?
I move we accept the minutes as presented.
Second.
Okay, so we move in properly, second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. We accept the minutes from our previous meeting. Now I'd like to open, go into our public hearing. The first item before us is conditional use permit, CU-TAC 2025-TAC 0005, Volvo Center Associates LLC and Natasha Vinnie, Taylor Smoke. That will be presented by Saul Galicia.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Saul.
So we have application CU 2025-0005 by Volvo Center Associates LLC, which is the owner, and Natasha Vinnie, Taylor Smoke, who is the applicant. They are requesting a conditional use permit to allow for the operation of a type 2 nightclub. The property is located at 639 Pilot House Drive in Suite 605, which contains 4,460 square feet within a 2.66 acre parcel. North of the property, we have a drainage ditch, Landly Federal Credit Union, and offices on property zone C4 Oyster Point Business District. East, we have single-family homes on property zone R4, single-family dwelling. South is the Oyster Point Square Shopping Center on property zone C1 Retail Commercial. And west, we have the Atlantic Union Bank and offices on property zone C1 Retail Commercial. The adopted One City One Future 2040 Comprehensive Plan land use map identifies neighborhood commercial uses for the parcel. This is intended to accommodate small-scale retail for offices, professional services, convenient retail, and storefront retail that serve a market at a neighborhood scale. The proposed nightclub use is in general conformance with these goals and strategies of the comprehensive plan. The property has been zoned C1 Retail Commercial since the citywide comprehensive zoning became effective on August 1st, 1997. On August 13th, 2024, city council approved conditional use permit CU 2024-0002 for the operation of a banquet hall at 639 Pilot House Drive, Suite 623. The zoning ordinance defines a nightclub as establishment that provides entertainment, stays open past 11:00 PM, and has an occupancy exceeding 100 people. While Taylor Smoke considers itself to be a cigar lounge and restaurant, it meets the zoning ordinance criteria for classification as a nightclub. Further, as it is located less than 500 feet away from residentially zoned property, it is classified as a type 2 nightclub and requires the approval of a conditional use permit in the C1 Retail Commercial District. The fire department did not object to the application. However, it noted that if approved, they would be required to comply with all state and local codes, including the Virginia State Fire Prevention Code. Similarly, the Department of Codes compliance noted that the building code may require a sprinkler system if the building classification meets certain criteria. This determination will be made at the time of building permit issuance. The Departments of Engineering, Public Works, Water Works, Police, Parks, and Recreation and Development have no objections to this request. The applicant intends to use the 4,460 square foot suite in the shops at Oyster Point Shopping Center. The proposed use is currently operating in the same shopping center at the opposite end of the center with a smaller capacity than the one proposed. The proposed Suite 605, which was previously occupied by a restaurant and sports bar, is the furthest away from the adjacent residential development. The suite allows the applicant to expand her existing business and provide a more suitable space for the smoked lounge. In order to operate the nightclub, the applicant must comply with the Virginia State Fire and Building Code. The target market is local cigar-owned lovers with about half of the space partitioned for smoking rooms, which entails full height smoke partitions and negative air pressure and weather striped doors with closers to maintain the smoke-free environment within the restaurant space. The lounge hours will be from 11:00 AM to 12:00 AM, Sunday through Thursday, and 11:00 AM to 2:00 AM, Friday and Saturday. Although there are no parking requirements, there are 251 onsite parking spaces provided. In conclusion, the proposed use of a type 2 nightclub as described in the business plan is consistent with the One City One Future 2040 Comprehensive Plan and will enhance the commercial viability of the shopping center. The proposed use will provide an expanded service that is not readily available in the area. As condition, the nightclub use is compatible with and not injurious to the surrounding properties. Hence, it is recommended that city planning commission recommends to city council approval of conditional use permit CU 2025-0005 for the operation of a type 2 nightclub at 639 Pilot House Drive, Suite 605, with 12 conditions. Those conditions include, prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy for the nightclub, the suite shall comply with all state and local codes, including the Virginia State Fire Prevention Code and the Virginia Building Code. The nightclub will operate from 11:00 AM to 12:00 AM, Sunday to Thursday, and 11:00 AM to 2:00 AM, Friday and Saturday. There shall be no smoking in the building outside of the designated smoke rooms. Signage shall be restricted to a building sign. All other standard conditions also apply. All 12 conditions are detailed in the staff report and will be part of the ordinance if approved by council. Are there any questions?
Commissioners, any questions?
One small question. Has there been, for the current location where they currently are, has there been any complaints from either residents or tenants regarding the current facility?
Not that I'm aware of.
How long were they in the, my question is how long were they in the present location?
Two years, next week.
Thank you.
At the current location, are the hours of operation the same?
Yes.
Yes, it sounds like we're gonna have a lot of questions for her, for the applicant once we get up. Any other questions for Saul?
I had a couple of questions. The, if it's approved for the nightclub, that will only extend to the new location. It will not be given to the existing location that intends to be a restaurant. That will have to remain a restaurant only, is that correct?
That is correct.
And then currently, it's a cigar lounge, but not a restaurant, is that right? Is, are?
I believe that the, it is a combination, but you can ask that applicant since they're here.
Okay, because that was my question, is are we approving that to be a restaurant? And is, that all falls under the same category?
It's a by right use.
Gotcha, thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, Saul.
Okay.
I will now open the public hearing on CU 2025-TAC 005. I presently have two cards on this matter, so let me go through those first. And the first one is Ms. Latasha Vinnie?
Yes.
Please come forward. If you plan to speak, please come forward and state your name and address.
You said state my name and address?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, Latasha Vinnie, 924 Hanson Drive, Newport News, Virginia, 23602.
Okay, thank you very much. Now you have an opportunity to ask your questions. Commissioner, let's see.
No, you know, my question was just related to whether or not we were voting today to approve the cigar lounge to become a restaurant and if there was a process for that. But you're saying that's a by right use?
Correct.
And then my only other concern was whether or not the nightclub permission was going to be extended to the restaurant location because that's so close. I drove by there today, there's residential houses right behind it. So that, those are my only, my only questions, yeah.
So have you, from my question to you, so you have not received any walk-up comments or any kind of concerns in reference to?
Not at all.
The crime, so the present location is going to become the restaurant?
No. The restaurant and lounge is going to the new location, 605, correct?
Okay, so, okay, so the present location will be abandoned as far as you're concerned?
Oh, no, I'm gonna open it a little bit later as a, like a wine bar. But the hours will be closing at like 10 or 11, so it won't be a club at all.
All right, so this petition before us is focused on the new location only?
Correct.
And the current location, the hours are the same, that you're gonna open the new location?
Correct.
I did have a question regards to the time, and Saul didn't allude to this time, but I was questioning in reference to the restaurant itself. The restaurant is scheduled to be closed at 11?
No.
Okay, I'm gonna read what I have here.
Oh, you're talking about during the week, yes, weekends, longer, I guess.
Okay, the restaurant hours of operation will be from 11:00 AM to 11:00 PM daily, while the lounge will be from 11, I'm assuming 11:00 AM to 12:00 AM, Sunday through Thursday.
Where are you seeing that?
I am looking at on page three, the top of page three. And I complete my reading.
Looking at the conditions.
No, no, at the top.
Right, I see it.
The restaurant hours of operation will be from 11:00 AM to 11:00 PM daily, while the lounge hours will be from 11:00, I'm assuming 11:00 AM to 12:00 AM, Sunday through Thursday. And then 11:00 to 2:00 for Friday and Saturday.
If so, that's a typo, because the restaurant stays open as long as the lounge is open.
That's what I was getting at.
Yes.
Okay.
Conditions.
The last page of your appendices.
Yes, I hadn't gotten there, but I was.
So the conditions, I'm looking at the conditions.
Well, I haven't got, my, this is prior to the conditions, okay? So this is something that was typed, this is something that was presented to me and it doesn't align with the other. So I'll just make it so if there's a discrepancy in my time, if you look at the.
The hours of operation will be whatever the hours of operation are for the lounge.
Okay, so everything will align?
Yes.
And that's what the conditions say, so the nightclub is the cigar lounge and the restaurant?
Correct.
And it says the nightclub will operate from 11:00 AM to 12:00 AM, Sunday to Thursday, and 11:00 AM to 2:00 AM, Friday and Saturday. That's the cigar and the, and the, and the suit, and the restaurant.
Thank you for clearing that up for me.
No.
Any other questions?
Ma'am, I appreciate the questions, but you're here today because you're expanding your business into a new location. Do you want to just tell us a little bit about you and the business since you're here? Before we pepper you with questions, sorry.
So Taylor Smoke is a cigar lounge, but it's a very upscale, unique location. I don't know, I don't think anyone here has been there. But we have a lot of entrepreneurs, a lot of doctors, attorneys. So it's like not the young fun environment. Any young people that came through have walked in and walked right back out the door. So it's a place for older people to get together, relax, smoke your cigars, and just woo-sah, type thing, so.
And the reason for the move is just need for more space?
Yeah, we need more space. Some of our members are locker members, so they have their locker where they keep their cigars in the locker. It's like a VIP area, they come there and work and relax and want to be away from everyone else. So with the new location, I'll be able to have more lockers, so I have more locker members. And as far as serving the food, we're like back-to-back going in between tables, so to give more space to be able to move around.
Thank you. I take offense to the fact that you don't know I've been there or not.
I was looking around, trying to see.
You were one of the young people that walked in.
It's okay, I cut my act, it's all right.
Just as a point of clarification, because you also own the banquet space that's in between the two, right?
I do, yes.
No one, are you gonna allow patrons to be able to like rent both spaces at the same time and try to use?
Not at all, no.
I just want that for record.
Okay, no.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Is there retail, like?
We, in the, we do have retail, so we do sell cigars. Some people come in, they come only to buy cigars or cigar accessories. So we do have a retail area for, for that.
If approved today, when do you expect to open? Hard to say?
Hard to say. My contract is here, so I'm hoping sooner rather than later.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you so ver, any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you so very much.
You're welcome.
The next card I have is Mr. Terrence Jackson. State your name and red dress, sir, please.
Good afternoon, Terrence Jackson, 1641 Egress Circle, Suffolk, Virginia.
Yes, sir.
I'm the general contractor responsible for bringing Ms. Vinnie's dream to light for the new location. I'm a Class A residential and commercial with over 20 years of experience. For the record, I am also a retired fireman, so I take pride in the life safety component of both residential and commercial construction. We've been engaging with the codes and complying, working through the, the current plans that we've presented with the permitting process to work out some of the questions that they had as it relates to the plans that we've presented, specifically as it relates to the smoking section and the non-smoking section, because that's been a very key component separating the two with the, with the airspace being clean versus the smoking space. But that is pretty much what I have, and I would just want to make sure that there were any questions as it relates to the construction piece of it, that I will try to address that for Ms. Vinnie during this hearing.
Well, thank you, sir. Any questions for, Mr. Jackson? Hearing none, thank you so very much, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, those are the only two cards I have on this matter. Any other questions of anyone before I close the public hearing? Okay, I'll like to close the public hearing, the matter is now before the commission.
Commissioner Taylor, I move that conditional use permit number CU-2025-0005 be approved with conditions as recommended by staff.
It's been seconded by Commissioner Black, did I hear that?
Yes.
Okay, so we move in properly, second. Any other questions, comments? Please call roll.
Commissioner Bowditch?
Four.
Commissioner Michelle?
Four.
Commissioner Williams?
Four.
Commissioner Shook?
Four.
Commissioner Stachow?
Four.
Commissioner Diaz?
Four.
Commissioner Black?
Four.
Commissioner Taylor?
Four.
Motion unanimous, eight to zero.
Thank you so very much. This matter will be heard by the city council on August the 26th, 2025. Thank you so very much for coming down and speaking on behalf of this. The next item we have before us is a zoning tax amendment.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes, ma'am.
They're actually, the August 26th meeting for city council is canceled, so it will be heard in September, the first meeting in September.
Ms. Vinnie, did you hear that?
I tried not to, but.
You really want to be there, so you might want to hear that.
Yeah.
So that will be, what was the date on that?
The ninth.
So correction? Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
So for correction and for record, that. So for correction and for record, that meeting, that mess, the change, the CU will, this may, conditional use permit will be heard by the City Council on September the 9th, 2025. Before I go further, will that be for all of them? All right, the next item we have before us, zoning tax amendment 2025 tag 002, City of Newport News, and that will be presented by Ms. Hall.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
This request is to amend Chapter 45, Article 35, Section 45 dash 3501 of the zoning ordinance to incorporate recent changes made by the Virginia General Assembly under Section 15.2 dash 2209 of the Virginia Code. This amendment expands local enforcement authority by allowing enhanced civil penalties for specific zoning violations, particularly those involving ongoing or repeat non-compliance such as unpermitted commercial activity or violations on multifamily properties. Currently, civil penalties in Newport News are limited to $100 for the first offense and $150 for each subsequent one, with a $3,000 cap. Violations can only be cited every 10 days. The proposed changes would allow higher penalties, starting at 200 and increasing to 1,500 per violation, with increased caps of 4,200 to $6,000 over a 12-month period, depending on the violation type. These changes will improve enforcement effectiveness, deter serious, serious or repeated violations, and ensure our ordinance complies with state law. The Regulations Committee reviewed and recommended approval of the amendment on July 16th, 2025. It is recommended that the City Planning Commission recommend the City Council adoption of zoning ordinance tax, ZT, tag 2025, tag 0002.
Thank you, Ms. Hall. Any questions for Ms. Hall?
Silly question, but curiosity, I'm assuming there's historical data that supports this increase, which, I mean, it's, it's obviously a significant jump, but have we seen over the years that there are numerous violations, repetitive violations that lead us to this point?
Yes.
I guess I want to ask specific numbers, but.
I cannot tell you specific numbers, but just from personal experience, I will say people do have the tendency to repeat violations because the penalties are so low.
Thank you.
That's interesting.
Just as a point of clarification, also with the new amendment, they can be cited more than once every 10 days now?
No, they are.
Because it doesn't necessarily say that. It just says it's been a 12-month period.
It's over a 12-month period, so you can cite them not necessarily more in that 10, 10-day increment, but there are incremental increases in fees associated.
And the language in the actual code section does say that you can't be cited more than once during any 10-day period for the same offense.
Okay, so that language didn't change?
No.
Any other questions for Ms. Hall? Thank you very much, Ms. Hall, don't go far. I'd like to open up the public hearing, and I do have one card on this matter, and I really don't, Smallridge?
Yes.
David Smallridge? Please come forward and, and state your name and your address, sir.
My name is David Smallridge. I live at 49 Woodfin Road, Newport News, Virginia. I live in the Hilton area, Hilton Village area. And first and foremost, I would just like to thank all the commissioners for doing the work that you do. It's, can be a thankless job, I have no doubts. And it's hard to do all the right things for the City of Newport News. I have a question regards to this particular item. And recently, I heard of activity from the planning and from the city in regards to Airbnb's, where a housing area was zoned to allow for Airbnb business. And at one point, there was a comment made, and I don't know where the comment was made, and I apologize for that, but it was that we won't hold the Airbnb owners accountable for penalties if they don't do certain things with changes that were made, i.e. that they were supposed to reside within the Airbnb for a period of six months or et cetera. And does this change to the rule, does that allow just quicker and more enforcement towards those owners?
No, I've read it to me.
No, and the comment that he's speaking of, in 2022, when the short-term rental ordinance was adopted? The city manager at the time said that we were not going to do quick enforcement, not that we would never do enforcement. So it is now 2025, three years later, and we are now beginning to do enforcement. It, the three years gave owners an opportunity to understand, learn the ordinance, and hopefully begin to comply.
So from this, yes. So initially, there was a, I wouldn't say a stay, but an opportunity for community to get to know the ordinance, act on the ordinance, and now we're starting to enforce the ordinance.
Okay, and does, are there impacts to how the enforcement is done because of this change? Is it just?
No, the, the process of enforcement remains the same.
I appreciate your answer.
I'm sorry. Enforcement, enforcement action will take place in the same way that it does. These are regulations that have been brought forth and adopted by the General Assembly that we are now required to bring onto our books.
Yes. Thank you so much. And thank you so much for your time and allowing me the opportunity to come up and speak on this particular matter.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you. Okay, do we have any questions for Mr. Smallridge? I will now, in this matter, close the public hearing. And the matter is before the commission.
I move that we recommend the City Council adoption of zoning tax amendment number ZT tag 0, I mean, tag 2025, tag 002.
I'll second it.
0002. Add one more zero in there, 0002. I thought I said 30. I know, right.
That's okay?
We're good. Is it moving second? Please call roll.
Commissioner Michelle?
Four.
Commissioner Williams?
Four.
Commissioner Shook?
Four.
Commissioner Statchell?
Four.
Commissioner Diaz?
Four.
Commissioner Black?
Four.
Commissioner Bowden?
Four.
Commissioner Taylor?
Four.
Motion unanimous, eight to zero.
This matter will also be heard by City Council on August, I'm sorry, September the 9th, 2025. Okay, the next item that we have before us is another zoning tax amendment is 02, ZT tag 02025 0003. And it's also be presented by Ms. Hall.
This request is to amend Chapter 45, Article 32, Section 45 dash 3202 of the zoning ordinance to incorporate language enacted by the Virginia General Assembly under Section 15.2 dash 2309 of the Virginia Code. The amendment clarifies that any determination made by the zoning administrator or other administrative officer is presumed correct. In an appeal to the Board of Zoning Appeals, the burden of proof lies with the appellant to demonstrate that the decision was incorrect. The proposed language also clarifies the order of presentation of evidence before the board, helping to reduce ambiguity and ensure alignment with state law. On July 16th, 2025, the Regulations Committee reviewed and recommended approval of the amendment. Staff recommends that the Planning Commission recommend adoption of zoning ordinance tax amendment, ZT, tax 2025, tax 0003 to City Council.
Any questions to Ms. Hall?
Ms. Hall, what's, what's the, since, since the zoning administrator or administrative officer has pretty much the authority to determine if someone's going to have it, what's the process to keep it to ensure fairness of, of whatever is determining by, by everyone?
As far as that goes, we follow the zoning ordinance. An individual has the right to appeal a decision or a notice of violation to the Board of Zoning Appeals, who then hears and determines whether to uphold the decision of staff or to find that the ruling of the staff person was incorrect and rule in favor of the applicant. In the event that the board upholds that decision, it can then be appealed to the circuit court.
And if I could say, this amendment just basically clarifies that the zoning administrator's decision that's appealed to the Board of Zoning Appeals is presumed to be correct. That presumption can be overcome with evidence, but we're just making clear that there is a legal presumption that's in the state code, that her decision or the zoning administrator's decision is presumed to be correct. And then the amendment also outlines the order in which evidence is presented.
And is the reason to add it here because it's in the state code and we're just bringing our description in alignment with how the state code is written?
Yes, and just so that it's abundantly clear when we go, when we have these local Board of Zoning Appeals cases. But yes, you're correct, we're mimicking what's in the state code.
Any other questions for Ms. Hall? Hearing none. I would like to now, thank you very much, Ms. Hall. I'd like to now open the public hearing on this matter. We have, again, one call, one card on this one. Mr. Smallridge, this is yours again. You, please come forward if you want to speak on this matter also. I have a card, on your card, you had both of them identified.
I did, I did. Again, my name is David Smallridge. I live at 49 Woodfin Road, Newport News, Virginia, in the Hilton network area. And again, I appreciate all the work that's being done and the opportunity to speak for you. Having just recently come off of a discussion that happened here in this very chamber for D.R. Horton and the proffers, I think you all recall all those little nuances to that, is the zoning document that we're speaking of include those proffers that would be listed in the zoning ordinance?
No. No. Those proffers are specific for that particular rezoning and that property.
Right, so what, and what I'm inquiring with this modification is if the applicant found that what was written in the zoning ordinance needed to be modified, that they could take essentially that zoning ordinance and make modifications to the proffers that were put together from?
Yeah, no, that's not the case there.
No, no, and that's, that's what I'm asking, I'm just.
No, that, it would, any changes to that particular ordinance, those proffers, would require another legislative action, so it would have to go back to City Council.
Okay, understood. Okay, thank you, that's all I had. Thank you very much. Thank you, sir.
Any questions for Mr. Smallridge? Hearing no questions, I'll now close the public hearing, and the matter is now before the commission.
Okay, I move that we recommend the City Council adoption of zoning tax amendment number ZT tag 2025, tag 0003.
I'll second it.
It's been moving properly second. Any, any other questions or comments you want to add? Hearing none, seeing none, Ms. Brown, please call roll.
Commissioner Williams?
Four.
Commissioner Shook?
Four.
Commissioner Statchell?
Four.
Commissioner Diaz?
Four.
Commissioner Black?
Four.
Commissioner Bowden?
Four.
Commissioner Michelle?
Four.
Commissioner Taylor?
Four.
Motion unanimous, eight to zero.
Thank you so very much. This matter will also be heard by City Council on September the 9th, 2025. Next on the agenda, we have Executive Secretary report from Ms. McCallister.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Just letting you know, you'll have two special exceptions for lots with less than 50 feet of frontage on August the 20th. It's at 824 31st Street and 1155 24th Street. I also wanted to update you on Camp Morrison. I know you all were expecting to see that on your agenda today. And what has happened, the applicant has withdrawn the application, and the applicant is seeking to try to build the development based on the 2013 rezoning and proffers.
Let me make sure I understand this. What they initially brought before us, just recently, they're going to trash that and go back to what they originally was approved?
They're not really trashing it. What they're doing is they're trying to work with staff and work with the proffers and that master layout to see if it's something that they can do. If it is not something that they can't, they can do, it doesn't mean it's not going to come back. But right now, they're working to see if they can adhere to those proffers and that master plan.
Okay.
Okay?
Great.
That's all I have.
Thank you so very much. Any other, any other insight to our upcoming meeting in addition to the ones that you know of that's coming up? That you were mentioning?
No, that's all we have right now.
We're starting to get messages about something else, so I'll just ask them if that was coming.
Those are just messages.
Yes, ma'am. I stand.
One, one thing I do want to say with that, when we do get emails, I, I normally make it a habit, as y'all see, to forward them to you just to be part of public record. Is that something that we should do as a practice, or do y'all also get them? Because I'm not sure when I see them.
Well, for the most part, we tend to get the same message.
Okay. Yeah, I thought so, that's why I don't forward. Anyway, any committee reports?
I have one.
Yes, sir.
For our first meeting for the South Central Jefferson Avenue Study, and left a package, agenda package for each of you. And we have a, the next meeting will be on August the 14th. It will be a Business Advisory Committee meeting. I will be there, and it was, we invited to have somebody else, anybody else who would like to participate?
I'll be working on that, sir. And I've taken that on advisement.
And again, what's the location for that?
It's the training room down in the city center area, City of Newport News Department of Development Training Room, third floor, suite 300, 11820 Fountain Way.
Now let's leave it to just two members attending.
Correct, I'm gonna have, I'll take that unadvised. I'll be reaching out to you commissioners and those that have seeking the interest of being a backup to Mr. Black, please reach out to me first, so that I can make sure we keep that to two. All right, because right now, I'm presently, I'm showing up as his backup, so I would love to encourage someone else to take over. Because I'm retired, if you're trying to say? Any unfinished business? I have a quick question, and, and I don't know if you guys can solve it, but these fake me, these emails that we're getting, I've gotten phone calls that, you know, like I've requested phone calls and conversations, has someone just hacked into our phone listings? Because some of the chair members, if some of the commissioners got requests for a meeting with me.
My view of it, they go, they see the city website, they see your chairman, and they see everyone else, and then they create their own email saying, hey, mock the head, send, the head's busy, so can you do this for me?
Are they requesting something of you?
Yes.
Gift cards.
Gift card. It's similar to the one that he had.
It starts with, hey, I need to talk to you for a minute.
Correct.
That's how it starts.
It'll go away.
It'd come from me.
Yeah, as long as people aren't responding to it, getting into it, it'll dissipate. Just a fishing episode.
Yeah, because I started, my first one came from Mayor Jones, and I, after they asked for money for laptops, I realized that was have to be a hack. So, anyway, thank you very much. I figured you couldn't fix it, but I just want to make you aware of that, that it is going on utilizing our phone listing, or email listing.
One question on that. I believe that some point there was a discussion of taking the commissioners' addresses off of the city website, or maybe.
And having a group email also.
But I know for, where you can go right now and see the commissioners to contact, the addresses aren't there, but if you search each commissioner individually in the staff directory, the addresses aren't there. So was there a, would anyone happen to know if there's been a clean sponging of the addresses, or that's just loose information that's available online right now?
I, we asked the IT to remove your addresses from our website, so if there's someplace that you're seeing it on the city website, that's not.
so if there's someplace that you're seeing it on the city website, that's not, I'm unaware of that. I'm assuming that anybody can look up somebody's name and get an address online, that's relatively easily done. So we have no control over that.
Okay, yeah, and I agree, yeah, if you Google anyone's information or name, you can probably find it in different sources. I just noticed that if you go to any search field within the staff directory in the City of Newport News, the information is still available.
I'll, we can take that back to them.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any unfinished business? Any new business? Hearing none, I will declare this meeting adjourned.